Good evening. The time is now seven o'clock. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Work Session for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. Please come to order. We'll start with a quick introduction, beginning from my right.
Heidi Kater.
Sheila Pryor.
Dan Janestra.
Pada Spindi.
Valentina Ayers.
Sarah Johansson.
Chase Anderson.
And I am Milin Sahoni. Thank you everyone for attending. This is the second of our two work sessions for this afternoon or evening. And we have one item on our agenda, and that's the Finance and Operations Report, in which we'll get a facilities update, and I will ask Dr. Anderson to introduce our guests.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and those in attendance here tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce two very important strategic partners with our facilities planning that we've been engaged with and working with for over fifteen years, actually, in our district. And we're very appreciative tonight for Sal Bagley, from Old Architects and Engineers, and John Hunick from Kraus Andersen, here to present the work that's been really in the throes of a lot of thinking and working for a three- to five-year period, probably, when we look back on it. So this is probably no less than our third, fourth, or fifth chapter of construction project considerations and working toward being responsive to the growth in the community. In the last seventeen years, we've built two elementary schools, a new early learning school, added on to our high school, and added a number of classrooms on to most, if not all, of our schools in one form or fashion. We've done a lot of long-term facilities maintenance. We've done a lot of just general upgrades and improvements throughout the district. So I say at PTA meetings in the fall, every year, that our facilities have never been better than they are right now, and it's true every year, because we have committed so much energy and focus on ensuring that our kids have a great place to learn in, and our staff members a wonderful place to work. So I know we have a number of slides to get through tonight, and a lot of ground to cover. We have also not only been working over a three- to five-year period, but probably more intensely in the last year to really streamline and refine, determine what are our facilities' needs, and what do we need to be doing in order to prepare for the future? If we go back in time, when we opened Metal Ridge in 2015, and then Northwoods in 2019, and think in terms of what we were planning for in that year, two or three, before each one of those timeframes, it was anticipating that we would have a large number of students that would be joining our district. We now have about eight hundred and fifty students in each one of those buildings. So it certainly did materialize, and even though you can't have a perfect crystal ball on the front end to know exactly how everything is going to evolve, I would say that those two buildings were timed nearly perfectly, and met the growing need within our community. So we're kind of at that point again, where we're taking a look at not only our elementary enrollments, but also our middle school enrollments, and our high school projections as well. So you're going to hear a lot of information tonight about the enrollment projecting that we've done. You've heard reports earlier from a demographer who did some enrollment study work for us. We had a second partner that worked with us on that, who also helped us with the attendance area changes that we implemented this year. You also had a recent report from Peter Leatherman about a community survey that was done about the level of support and level of awareness about facilities and the growth within the community. So there'll be spacklings of all of those things, I think, tonight, and a little more specificity. And in general, what you're going to be hearing tonight is an overview from Sal and John, and they're here with a couple of their associates as well, who may offer some insights as well along the way. But as you know, we have a meeting next week. I'll let Sal and/or John speak a little bit about what the steps are, so that we don't get duplicated too much information. So without elaborating further, I'm going to turn it over to Sal and John.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So we are here to present the recommendation from the task force that has been doing hard work, as well as district leadership. My glance behind me right before we got started, I think we have a couple of task force members in attendance tonight, so thank them for being here, and I will make sure to cover all of the work that they've done. So to start, the district has an ongoing committee called the Facilities Steering Committee, as well as the Strategy Leadership Team, or sometimes referred to as SLT. And as Superintendent Anderson said, it's really been for years trying to track when is going to be the right time to accommodate projected growth. But that got a lot more intense over the past year. This year was experienced quite a bit of growth that led to some facilities changes that you had to implement this past year. And we did a lot of work over the summer to prepare for this task force that met this fall. Walden Kraus Andersen have been helping by doing test fits and looking at concepts, budgets, and just a little bit of hearkening back to times we've been in front of you recently. We did an update on June 23rd and August 25th. Here is a timeline of a road-to-way potential bond referendum. I'll kind of walk you down the road here for a second. At the top there, you can see the Facility Steering Committee as an ongoing activity. The Community Task Force engagement was September and October. I'm going to actually go through what they did at all four of their meetings this evening. You heard from Peter Leatherman of Morris Leatherman Company for that community survey number two that happened in September. In October, we've been working to refine the cost in the proposed plan, and then you see in red, today, November 3rd, right where we are on that journey. This timeline suggests that if you were to ponder an April 14th, 2026 bond referendum, that you would need to adopt a recommendation sometime this month, and submit a review and comment to the Department of Ed no later than November 25th. So that is in state statute, when that has to be to them. Or I should say, there are timelines of when you have to publish the letter you get from the commissioner, and that there's a window of time of when it has to be in the paper. And so to make sure that you have time to do that, especially since not every paper is published every day these days, right? So it's our recommendation that it be to them no later than that day. Then you can see other things that have to happen leading up to a potential bond referendum. Of course, there's communications planning, big burden of responsibility to get people informed about what's being asked for. There's a deadline to certify ballot questions no later than January. And then you start to see things like launching campaign awareness, community meetings. There, on the timeline towards the bottom, you can see that publishing that letter we have to get back from the commissioner, and then getting out the vote. So that would be the potential timeline for an August referendum. As I mentioned, the SLT has been doing a lot of work to get ready for the task force. We did have a series of focused meetings this summer, so I listed those here and what we did at each of them. So in June, we reviewed enrollment projections and talked about planning targets, as well as recapped the survey that you did back this spring. In July, you can see we reviewed solutions to address capacity challenges at two different work sessions, as well as a few other adequacy topics. And then in August, we did a lot of discussion about getting ready for the task force, and we debriefed the work session that you all had on the 25th. The charge for the Community Task Force was to review key data, explore potential options, and develop a recommendation for addressing long-term facility needs. And that would be presented to Superintendent Anderson and help inform a proposal to you all here at the board. They met four times, so that was September 17th, October 1st, October 8th, and October 23rd. And the goal was to have them submit a recommendation by late October. We did have the better part of the Strategy Leadership Team attend each meeting to serve as resources, but they were not official task force members. So the goal for the community task force on facilities of who we wanted to be on it was to be about fifteen to twenty people representing a diverse cross-section of district perspectives. So you can see a few of those perspectives listed here, right, from, you know, community education, liaison committees, parent advisory committees, finance advisory, right, all of your different input groups. And then on this slide, you can see the individuals who ended up serving on the task force, of which we have several tonight. I want to thank all of them for their commitment. People were diligent in attending all four meetings, asking great questions. We had quite a bit of correspondence and follow-up between meetings of people asking for further information or clarification, asking us to bring things to the following meeting. We ended up sending out recordings to some of your work sessions, if people wanted more information on enrollment projections, for example. So I really feel that there was a real seriousness to the task that they brought. And there was great attendance. Certainly, a few people had to miss a meeting here or there, but they were recorded, meeting minutes sent out. So I think people did their responsibility to stay caught up, and we're very thankful for that effort. So now I'm going to just go through what we did at each of the meetings in an ideally abbreviated way. I'll try to keep it moving. I know you've already had a long day. So you can see in the upper-hand side of all of these slides, I wrote, you know, "from task force meeting blink," just to indicate it was a slide directly taken from their presentation. So at the first meeting, we did introductions and norms. We reviewed that same timeline, talked about process. And then we did a lot of educating of just the district's facilities, you know, where they are, how old they are, when they've been added on to, what programs they serve. We talked about the capacity of the district's facilities, how many students they can hold. And then we did a lot of discussion on enrollment history and facilities responses. Superintendent Anderson hit some of the highlights in his intro, but we thought it was important to kind of go back to the last couple of bond requests and explain, you know, how they correlated to district enrollment history. And then we ended, last but not least, on enrollment projections at that first meeting. Here is a graph of the district's K-12 enrollment history, going back to the 2012-2013 school year. These are all October 1st numbers. So you can see that goes back to having just over ten thousand five hundred students, going through a rapid increase all the way up to the 2019-2020 school year, getting just over twelve thousand students, and then picking back up, and now this school year, crossing that thirteen thousand students for the first time ever. So when we talk about what happened as a response to that growth experience, I won't read all of this to all of you, but you can see these were kind of the major things that happened in each year. So in 2013, there were additions at three elementary schools for all-day kindergarten. That's when it was adopted by the legislature to be funded the previous year. 2014 was the passage of the bond referendum to fund Metal Ridge, as well as the most recent addition to the high school. 2015, purchase of the Elm Creek Building that was used for Wayzata transition for a period of time. And then lots of moves in 2016. You can see here, early learning school moving into leased space, a few district departments moving into leased space, the high school and Metal Ridge additions and new building opening. Following that, you were already ready for your next elementary school. So in 2017, the bond referendum to fund Northwoods Elementary School passed, and that also included some district-wide work for site safety and media center improvements. And that is when the addition to Metal Ridge opened, right? So before a new building's even done adding on to it because of the intensity of growth. 2018, the district purchased land in the city of Medina for future school needs. We'll show you that site plan tonight. And then in 2019 is when And then in 2019 is when Northwoods opened, and there was some leased space that a lease ended and moved to different leased space. That is also the year you bought the Highway 55 warehouse. In 2020, the early learning school as in addition to Oakwood was completed and opened, which helped eliminate all leased space in the district. And three of those departments formerly in leased space lived on the second floor of the early learning school for a period of time, as well as adult basic ed. And then in 2022 was when this building was purchased, and that's training space, school board meetings, and served as temp space for administration, as the transition program was experiencing so much growth that they needed to move into the formerly former District Administration Building, or DAP. And so that's the same year the District Service Center was purchased, and all departments can now be together. And it was all really in the effort of addressing student growth needs. So we were doing a lot of moving around of adults to accommodate student needs. When it comes to capacity of the buildings, I didn't include each individual capacity map, certainly can if anyone's interested as a follow-up. But you have capacity for just over 5,700 elementary school students, just over 3,200 middle school students, just over 4,000 high school students, so that just over 13,000. And that's what you reported as having for students for this year, right? Essentially. So there is a need essentially at all grade levels for additional spaces you look into the future. This is a graph showing the enrollment projections over the next 10 years. So you can see the data point indicated. This graph is taking into account the multiple projectionists that the district engaged with. So you can see that this chart shows exceeding 14,000 students in that 10-year time window. So as I just said, the district's projected to exceed available building capacity at every grade level by the 2027-28 school year. When it break down into kind of grade level bands based on how you use buildings, this is the graph for K-5. So the dotted blue line represents the capacity of all your elementary schools, and the yellow line represents that enrollment projections. So you can see here already over projection or already over capacity at the elementary schools. And you can see the high point being at 6,068 students. There are some factors to discuss here. When it comes to a 10-year enrollment projection for elementary school students, there have to be assumptions made around birth rate and development that is not known. So there's conservatism built into the projections. So you can see that they indicate almost a decline of sorts. But really, what's going on is that they really, they only take into account development that has permits actively in hand or under development. So we can't know what those are, and so it kind of shows a flatlining of that type of growth. So not an enrollment projectionist myself, but we did have to talk about that at the task force quite a bit of what does that mean? And does that mean we're actually going to decline? Here is the 6-8 graph. So you can see here, you're very, very close to the capacity of your buildings at the middle school level. And then you can see projected in the 2027-28 school year to exceed that and to start to get up into the nearly 3,500 in the 29-30 school year. And then last but not least, we have the high school. So the capacity of the high school is just over 4,000 students at 4,069. And you can see the projections for the high school are actually getting up into the just over 4,900 students in that time window. So significant pressure projected to be experienced there. Lots of discussions certainly at each task force meeting and a lot of information sent out between. So then we always left space at the beginning of the meeting for thoughts since last meeting, kind of what's been on your mind? Have you talked to anyone about this? What questions do you have? So we did a lot of reporting back of information. Then the planned agenda at meeting number two, we talked about safety and security. We talked about other needs as a growing school district, other than just having a seat for everybody. And then the ideas that had been brainstormed thus far to address those needs. So we ended up showing a few diagrams to the committee. When it comes to safety and security needs, the philosophy in the district here is that hardware, software, supports, and action plans all work together as a system, and you always want to strike that balance of being warm and welcoming for families while still being secure and safe. We had a lot of questions from task force members of what do the buildings have today? And what do they have consistently versus what do some buildings have versus what do other buildings not have? And, you know, there's no shortage of available improvements, right? So there was a lot of discussion about some recommendations of how things could be improved district-wide, and so they're summarized shortly here as intelligent access control and screening, layered building and site protection, and site unified emergency communication and mass notification. So when it comes to intelligent access control and entry screening, there's some recommended improvements. The goal would be to have a single, secure point of entry at every school to make sure we know who is in the buildings at all times, including a digital video intercom system to be able to visually identify and communicate with people, expanding access control, AKA card readers at our facilities, updating the visitor management system to check against some national databases and print identification badges, and keep records. That's one of the great examples of improvement from the paper record, as well as advanced video surveillance, including things like parking lots. When it comes to layered building and site protection, we talked about updating some classroom doors with security locks that allows staff to lock from the inside and not have to go out into the hallway, some response triggers and unified communication systems, and then perimeter security to deter certain activities. Communication is obviously an essential part of any emergency response plan. So talked about ways that things could be done more quickly, more clearly, and more accessibly. So there would be a proposal to have a district-wide notification platform, multimodal alerting. So what that means is really getting to read something, getting to hear something, and getting to see something, right? Depending on if you're in a loud space or have a disability, things like that. And then just the ability to integrate systems. There is a significant amount of technological improvement to make things more unified. And as we all know, in an emergency, the simpler and more connected things are, the less steps there are to remember to do. So that recommendation really came to the task force from that district's security committee. So we had a lot, I would say we had a healthy discussion at meeting number two about all those things. Kind of a safety adjacent topic at Plymouth Creek Elementary. So the, actually across the street from us, right? So that building does not have the same site safety features that all of your other elementary schools do. So right now, the buses are parking on the red highlighted fire road behind the building. And historically, the district has relied heavily on this parking lot to kind of make that site work, actually one of the main rationales for buying this piece of property, right? And so there's a desire to have a true site safety separation of buses and cars at this site, and the land that this building sits on presents that opportunity. So we talked about that of creating, we call them a bus loop. Other needs. So when we talk about serving students, a few topics came to mind. Adequately sized kitchens to prepare and serve food for students. You have a few buildings that require off-site preparation and transportation because of inadequate space, and there's really a desire for that consistent experience across all buildings for all students. And I'll kind of get to each of these one at a time. So which buildings have inadequately sized kitchens? So you have three elementary schools and one middle school. So that's Birchview, Greenwood, and Sunset Hill. And then at East Middle School, both the kitchen and the cafeteria are considered undersized. When it comes to that comparison of how big they should be, if you look at the Department of Education guidelines for kitchen and cafeteria sizes, you can see the elementary spaces range from 220 to 400 square feet, and the recommendation would be to be between 1,800 and 2,400 square feet. So I put a picture on the right-hand side of the kitchen at Sunset Hill. Really, the operations has to spill well outside of the space, which is taking up dining space. And then at East Middle School, it's 700 square feet, and the recommendation would be between 3,100 and 4,600. The Department of Ed also has guidelines for dining space for students. They recommend 15 square foot per student. And so if you kind of take the 800 students or so being served there, divided by three lunches, times 15, it should be 4,000 square feet, and it's about 2,300 square feet, so about about half the size it should be. When it comes to access to swimming pool facilities, this is a topic that the task force spent a lot of time talking about. So we started just with some kind of grounding information. The district is currently engaged in a 40-year lease with Lifetime Fitness that was initiated at the time the high school was constructed, and it goes through 2036, 40 years later. And one of the terms of that lease is that it's extendable at lifetimes discretion. We did talk about that the district has pools at East and West, but they are not suitable for high school competitions. They don't have adequate spectator seating space. They don't have really what you need from a number of lanes to run a meet perspective, do not have adequate diving accommodations. And then one of the challenging parts with pools is the many people who use them want different conditions, right? So there's certain people or certain groups using pool facilities who want them cold because that is great for athletic competition. So that's really what a high school competition pool wants to be, as opposed to maybe more of a community swimming lesson for young children. Really, you seek to have more of a warm pool, and that's not the type of thing you can at the flip of a switch do. Of course, you can change it, but it takes time. So it's challenging to share between those types of space users. So the East and the West pool are used. The East Middle School pool is used predominantly for community programming, and the West pool is actually used by the high school athletics program for synchronized swimming. And so again, some of those considerations in a pool environment are temperature as well as ventilation to be successful. And then we heard a lot from Scott Gangler, served as a resource to the committee, talked about the challenges with scheduling when you are not the owner of the space, right? Daily practices is one thing, but I think where it really starts to become a challenge is in meets. So spent some time talking about that with the committee. Of course, when we talk about growth, that growth will also hit your early learning school. So we had to educate people on what the early learning school is. You know, it's a, it's one of your services that comes with a lot of acronyms and catch-up, right? ECSE and ECFE, and what is that, and who participates? So we did a little bit of that, as well as explaining the 2020 project and the fact that the second floor was master-planned to be expandable to add more classrooms. And we also talked a little bit about the correlation between participation in preschool programming and continuing in the district, and how important that is to support the community. We went through the rationale for additional space. The number one is obviously increased demand and wait lists. The district's been able to, as you've had additional space in elementary schools, offer additional program availability in other elementary schools. You know, if they had an extra room, you could open another section. But as space needs have become more under pressure, that's become less of an option. And so the early learning school presents a great opportunity for that. We talked about the middle school flexible learning spaces. So the picture on here is from West Middle School, and we heard from Ryan Carlson, who also has been helping the committee as a resource, just talk about kind of the heavy and inflexible and not space-efficient furniture that is in most of your middle school classrooms, which has not been updated on the whole, the challenges that that presents, and what benefits that flexible furniture could provide. So as a district, you've really implemented flexible furniture at all of your elementary schools, but you just haven't tackled it at the middle school level yet. And much of it is at its, really past its useful life. Many of those rooms, Ryan also noted at his building and at East, are not overly generous-sized rooms. So efficiency starts to become a real driver with class sizes as well. And then we spent the rest of the meeting doing a small group activity that ended up rolling into a survey online because we didn't get through it, just talking about solutions. So I won't go through all the maps that you saw there at the end, but we talked about, okay, so what are we going to do about this? Right? We need more seats at every level. So solutions at the elementary level. One solution was a new elementary school, number 10, on district-owned land. The discussion was to plan it for about the same size as Metal Ridge or Northwoods, which is around 900 students when totally maxed out full. Or are there any elementary schools that are good candidates for expansion? So we talked about, you know, that a few buildings have been studied for that. The challenge is that the buildings that have the adequate site space for expansion would put those buildings over 1,000 students. And I think that's been giving the district administration some pause around ideal experience for elementary. And those are not necessarily the buildings that would make sense logically from an attendance area perspective, right? So it's we, maybe, maybe we can expand in those places, but it creates long-term kind of unintuitive attendance areas, and that is something that the district has to live with for forever, right? Not to mention that that, the cost of that solution was actually very quickly approaching the cost of a new building. So we spent some time talking about that. At the middle school level, you'll see some similarities here. Of course, New Middle School, number four, the land that the district owns in Medina, I'll show you a site plan later. It's just over 86 acres, so it is large enough to accommodate both. And the discussion has been potentially for about 800 students, but to be expandable. So the, you see in the notes over there, that would, the approximate concept there would be that East, West, and this new fourth middle school would all be for around 800 students, and Central would be around 1,200 to get to that number of seats we need. We did discuss how the expansion of East and West could serve these growth needs. So that would put East and West also at 1,200 each students, in addition to Central's 1,200. The challenges there again are site size. So fields and parking lots today would have to become, you know, places to build classrooms. There are already traffic pressures, in particular at West. And then there's some aspects to the buildings that would be challenging to remedy, so you would have to really learn to live with them, like narrow hallways, right? There's some, those are some challenging topics that really can't be fixed. And so as we talked with the task force and the district administration around, you know, East and West being 1,200 student buildings, there wasn't much comfort with that being a good long-term solution. And then not to repeat myself, but same challenge with attendance areas, right? Trying to get people actually to go to that building would require a lot of transportation and attendance area challenges, very disruptive. And the cost was not that far off. If I remember, it was within about 15% of the cost of a new building. Excuse me. That's less than 15%. It's like more like 10%. So then when we talked about the high school, the expansion of the high school was really looked at in a couple of different ways. One was as an addition to the building, and the other one was an expansion as a standalone building on the campus. And really, the only, the only reason to make it standalone was if you couldn't figure out how to add on to the building, right? Because being detached means students having to go out in the weather, creates challenges for security and supervision and things of that nature. And as I said before, we need to find space for about another 900 students. So we actually had a series of planning meetings with the high school administration to talk about for 900 more students, how much more of this type of space do you need? And how many more offices do you need? And what would the counseling department do? And what might we do for physical education? And so we kind of went department by department and brought a recommendation of how much space needed to be added. I do have a diagram to show you later. So then, as I mentioned, they got to see diagrams of every building, so I just put a couple snips of what a few of those look like. And they did an activity in small groups that where they were given post-it notes, and they could ask, you know, put a green or a yellow or a red post-it note. And a green is, you know, we get it, we think this is a good idea. Yellow is not enough information to make a ruling, like we need to hear more about this. And red would be kind of, we would have concerns or would struggle to recommend this space as presented. So they got, I would say, most of them got about halfway through the activity before the meeting had to end, lots of great discussion, and then they finished up as a homework exercise. Oops, sorry. Meeting number three. Again, thoughts since last meeting, we had quite a bit of follow-up to do. We did have Peter Leatherman that evening, who gave the same presentation he gave to you all, and there was a lot of wonderful questions that the task force asked him, asking him for advice or what's happening in other communities and what he's seeing as a Wayzetta specific phenomenon versus more of a statewide or metro-wide. So he was with us for about an hour of this two-hour meeting. And then for the rest of the meeting, we did the survey follow-up, and John presented kind of rough-order magnitude budgets and talked about how we budget potential bond referendum projects. And John presented kind of rough order magnitude budgets and talked about how we budget potential bond referendum projects. So some of the questions that came out of that activity was a lot of wanting to hear more about what the proposed special education renovations would be. There's this acronym SDC specially designed classroom. And not everybody has been in one of those before or knows what a good one looks like or what it what features it needs to have. So we talked about that. We had more discussion about what flexible learning spaces would do across the middle schools as well as the importance of consistency. Especially if you're pondering another middle school, wanting to make sure that you have parity with your other buildings. We did have a quite a bit of discussion of the overview of the rationale for having a single high school in the district. I won't go into that deeply tonight, but we did that night. And then a code requirement to have storm shelters in buildings built essentially after twenty twenty. So on the whole, that a layperson would walk in the building and not really see much different. But we have to budget part of the buildings to have a higher cost per square foot. So this is a snapshot from that evening that John presented of, you know, how do we? How do we create budgets? And maybe I'll just let you go through that quick.
Sure. So yeah, we went through and budgets on, right? There's no drawings that exist yet, the single diagrams that you have. So we use a program called Model Logix. And we plug in dozens and dozens, if not hundreds of different types of building, whether K built them, Wold built them or somebody else built them. And then it needs human element into it, right? What is a site like? Is it a clean site, easy site, hard site? And that'll give us an average cost per square foot. So as whether it's a new building, addition, heavy remodel, medium remodel, light remodel, things like that. And then we plug them into a very big spreadsheet like you're seeing right there that that brings out the cost. Those costs need to include all your permits, so boring survey. So the furniture that goes into those new buildings and that everything that's included, including site costs. Things such as that, so. And then that's an example of Model Logic. So when you plug in all this information, it'll give you a whole bunch of different examples throughout the state of Minnesota. And then we nail it into Wayzetta, but that's just what the spreadsheet looks like. And then we did talk about projects to public school and how bidding works. All projects are publicly bid and we did want to remind the task force of that. So what happens a year from now, or maybe more than that, right? When projects are pending a successful referendum, they go into design, then they go into public bidding, right? So all plans have detailed work scopes, advertising for bids, interview the low responsible bidders, organize them. They then come back to the school board for bid approvals. And being on or under budget, board approves and then you move into construction. So we talked about that with the task force also.
And that meeting, we did go over some costs by building is how it was presented. Kind of if all of the scope as discussed was pursued, what would be the cost by building? So then between meetings three and four, task force members did a prioritization exercise. We sent that out again as a survey. There was a lot of people wanted to spend more time with it. And there was a request at the end of the meeting for input from the leadership team for what 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 they recommend we should do with all of this, right? As people have been studying the problem for years. And we also did a lot of between meetings, John and I and our our colleagues doing a refinement of budgets and potential tax impact. So then meeting forward is our last scheduled meeting, of course, thought since last meeting, couple follow up topics. We reviewed the survey results and again, just to be clear, this is their survey, not the Peter survey anymore. And talked about themes that the leadership had discussed and those recommendation considerations. So in the upper right hand corner here, you can see just a graphic. We asked them to prioritize like which projects were the, you know, critical, essential, important or less important. And in general, the task force and the leadership team had had a lot of consensus and overlap between the way that they reacted to the survey. I would say there was more urgency on the leadership team about the pursuit of new buildings as it related to having space for everyone. As you probably heard people talk, Peter talk about, there was less community awareness of the need for additional space, right? I think the community recognizes that you're growing. They see the development, they recognize that means students, but there's a lower level of awareness that you actually don't have room for them, right? So there were some people who were concerned about that. As well as just wanting to stay at a reasonable tax impact. So of course, people being practical. We did discuss, there was a pretty strong recommendation about if there's an inclusion of a pool that it as a second question was advisable. So we spent a lot of time at meeting two talking about that. And I would say people being torn between knowing it's a need. And if you want to have a high school swim program that's successful, it's always helpful to have a venue. And being concerned that if it was included with everything else, you know, could that drag it all down, right? So people were kind of concerned about that. So a second question was how many people felt was the right way to handle a request such as that? Of course, exact packaging is up to the school board, right? This is coming as a a recommendation. We did talk about, you know, school finance is complicated and people were not sure, does all of this have to be bond projects? Is there anything that's qualifying for another funding source? So we talked a little bit about long term facility maintenance and the tech levy and lease levy. And then it was important for them to see the other image on this side is the estimated tax impact chart that Ellers had prepared. At various scenarios, what an average house would be. I have a more updated one on a future slide. But we end up talking about that and really the idea that affordability means something different to everyone. But wanting to make sure that we're putting out a plan that's successful. We did talk a little bit that evening about the pros and cons of a phased approach. Like what if we did some things now and talked about doing some things later? Obviously, the challenge there is that projects do get more expensive with time. And it wasn't like some long window of time away, right? It was, well, gosh, we need all of that in the next few years and we don't want to look like we ask. And then just a year later, ask again that that they thought that that would be perceived negatively of not being planful. And that there was a lot of discussion of making sure that whatever is put out has district wide impacts. So that every school, community, or every building would see something in it for them. That it couldn't be only about growth in the north, for example. So when we talk, we had a two. Meetings with the leadership team kind of on either side of that task force meeting. And some of the key themes out of that were that adequate capacity for all students is obviously top priority. Everybody needs somewhere to sit. And then there was a couple categories. So there's a an essential programmer experience alignment. A good example of that is like the kitchen projects that everybody should have the same experience, no matter where they go to school. So that's kind of a category of project. And then there's an essential programmer experience enhancement, which is leveling everybody up like the safety and security projects, right? So that's not a parody issue, but it's everybody could be better. And the goal was to really finesse the project scopes to get as much done as possible while trying to stay. This slide says between twenty and thirty a month for the average household. So there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, what would that generate in projects? And are there any other funding sources that we could tap into? And so the the record, we left it with the task force as that we actually had them do a, I should say it on this slide. We had them do a fist of five exercises, what I call it. Not a not a tool we invented, but it's a good one for developing consensus in groups. So we have people, you know, each one hold up the number of fingers. And a a five is I emphatically support this, I'm a champion of it. Four is another positive vote, right? A three is a, you know, I maybe this isn't my favorite or it's not what I would personally choose to do, but I understand it and I accept it going forward. And then, of course, anything under a three is various forms of disagreement, right? All the way to a fist would be I, you know, I'm opposed to this. And we had everyone be a three or above. We had several individuals who were at a three, I think we had three or four of them. And most of those were people who I think just really like to know deep details, right? So we were, we were kind of voting on a concept of a plan, right? Of trying to keep it under thirty a month, trying to accomplish all of these things and, you know, working more with the leadership team on exactly what gets included. And so a few people, I would say, you know, it's like, I like the direction it's going, but I need to, I need to see the final details. But we did not have anyone vote under a three. So that recommendation summary, I'm sorry, I've been talking for a long time. I promise I will open it up for questions here soon. So that recommendation summary. Q one, I, we did not discuss this with the task force, but we we made them aware that there's a likely renewal of the tech levy. So and that that would likely be a question one on any ballot. So just for clarity, if this ever gets used in the future, I listed that. So then the recommendation was that bond question one be, I put the themes here, safety and security district wide. That would be hardware and software improvements, as well as that Plymouth Creek site safety project. Adequate capacity at all grade levels. And so the projects that would fall under that would be elementary school number ten, middle school number four, the an addition at the high school. And a build out of that second floor of the early learning school. And then those programmer experience enhancements to have consistency across the district would be the flexible learning space at the middle schools. The adequate kitchen and cafeteria space, adequate gymnasium space. You have two buildings that do not have adequate gymnasium space, Sunset Hill and West Middle School. And various special education renovations. Not every building has an adequate specially designed classroom to handle students with special needs. So that was what was recommended in question one. The recommended total for that is four hundred and sixty five million. And then, as as already discussed, the recommendation would be to have a pool as a second bond question. It would technically be a Q three, right? And that that would be contingent on the passage of question one. And so that would be an eight lane pool with a separate diving. While the discussions thus far have been located at the high school. And that the recommended budget for that is right around thirty one. When it comes to tax impact, I already talked about the goals to standard thirty a month. So you can see here, the chart on the left is a chart that Ellers made. This most recent version is from October twenty ninth last week. And I've highlighted in an orange box, the average value home in the district, so six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you can see broken down into a question one, question two in both questions. I blew it up in a chart on the right. So you can see question one, estimated tax impact is twenty nine a month. Estimated tax impact for question, bond question two is four dollars a month. And if both questions were successful, it'd be thirty three dollars a month. Again, these are estimates. They have taken into account estimates of what you might get for an interest rate at a bond sale. They estimate net tax capacity growth, things like that. So there's conservatism built into this. And then I don't think I'm going to go building by building by building, but I'll maybe talk generally as I click through. So you can see up on the right hand side, John said it before. None of these are drawings of designs, they're scope diagrams. After a successful referendum, you would go through an engagement process with relevant staff and administrators. And they would really help design the projects. So what we do is establish a need and a budget that would accomplish that need. And then we get to figure out how after. If you've never seen the piece of land that the district owns up in Medina, here is a graphic of that. So the white dashed outline is the acreage that you own. It is, I think, eighty six point six acres. There is a a couple of identified wetlands on that site. So you can see there's a large one on the west side, kind of a anvil shaped one on the north and then a one kind of in the center south. But it's still plenty of acreage if you were to pursue two buildings on that. So that's what the black shapes are. The one in the bottom right hand corner is just the outline of Northwoods or the footprint of Northwoods for references, as well as the playgrounds and parking. And then a potential middle school kind of of the approximate right size, again, hasn't been designed. Then for your reference, we did include diagrams of every building and a bulleted list of those themes and how it would apply to them. Again, I think for out of respect for time tonight, I won't click through all of them. But, you know, here's an example of Birch View, which would have the expanded kitchen and some site work. Some improvements for special education and then safety and security is everywhere. I think I'll click through and we can come back to anything if people would like to. I think I'll probably hit the high school, just since I referred to it earlier. So this is the proposal of how Wayzetta High School could expand to accommodate nine hundred more students. So there would be a proposed addition to the north, again, shape to be determined. Reroute the fire lane around the building, relocate the tennis courts and expand parking. This would require ongoing discussion with the city of Plymouth, who owns some of the lands that this is shown to take up. And then you can see bolded on here, this blue footprint does assume the footprint of that eight lane pool if that were to be successful. So that's already shown in the in the blue shape. So then again, going back to the timeline, we've got a couple of meetings ahead of us scheduled. So we've got the meeting next week. And then the November twenty fourth meeting would be kind of that last chance to authorize to submit review and comment. Certainly next week is an option for that activity, but it's needs to be done before November twenty fifth, right? So with that, I would take any questions, comments, discussion?
Thank you, Sal and John. Wow, that that's, how many slides was that?
I'm not sure, but I had already cut it back about eighty.
Eighty slides, wow, okay. You speak fast, that's good. Any questions, comments? Yes, Dan?
Thank you so much for the very fascinating presentation. I'm very happy to hear that facilities study for additional kitchen and cafe space. Cafeteria space has been underway and we're making a really important investment. I have two questions. The first is, when you showed that diagram of a storm shelter as it would apply on the high school's footprint. Are there any, you know, programming or academic applications of that space? Or is this something that just kind of has to sit open?
Oh, that's a great question. So what what the code requires is for, in almost all instances, any expansion of a school facility or a new facility to have a part of the building. That is strong enough to withstand an F four tornado. So it's hardened hardened construction and then we have provisions for getting water there, need to have bathrooms there, have to have backup lighting, things like that. So it can be, it can be totally usable space every other day of the year. So in this case, this just shows the outline of how much space would have to be hardened to accommodate the, you know, five thousand students plus staff. But it can look like classrooms, it can look like gyms, it can look like cafeteria space. So it doesn't have to look like a wasted space. The walls will just be thicker, likely a concrete roof, things of that nature. And you might have even in your, if you're ever in other school district buildings, you know, there's more than fifty of these built across Minnesota in the past five years, so.
Excellent. And then to ask about the four hundred and sixty five million dollar price tag.
Sure. Click back. Probably that one.
Yeah. Is that dollar amount fairly finalized? How much might it vary over the next several months?
Sure, maybe I'll start and you can talk about that too. So you do as a board have to set an amount that you cannot exceed, right? So that needs to be a not to exceed number that would be on what the ballot of what a voter would see. And so I would say that we've been working to establish budgets. That really protect your options in that regard, right? So we want to make, we understand the district's expectations around quality of facility. We've been doing a lot of checking of how big things need to be. We've had several focus meetings with civil engineers to talk specifically about site and utilities. We've had a year long study talking about traffic impacts at the Medina site, potential, I should say, traffic impact. So, I mean, there's a lot of thought into that number, but that number needs to get it all done and it can't go up later, right? So that's what's important.
Excellent, thank you.
So what's what's the contingency that has been built into that number?
Do you have?
And roughly like ten, fifteen, twenty percent?
Yeah, so on contingencies on a newer building, your contingencies are typically less because there's less unforeseen, like when you get into a messy remodel. So the newer, like the middle school and elementary school are in that four percent for contingency. And then they creep up from between four and ten. So if it's a really messy remodel, contingencies will be closer to ten. If it's a lighter remodel, contingencies will be five, six or seven. So contingencies are planned in.
Okay. So when we look at new, can I go? So when we look at new schools, right? Were there any discussions around, hey, we have to? Again, realign the the schools and everything, right? So has that expense been accounted? Because at some point in time, maybe we have to again change. Because at some point in time, maybe we have to again change the boundaries and things like that.
Oh, sure. Um, we had a couple of task force members passionate around this topic as well. Um, so to my knowledge, there's not been any attendance area planning yet. That's more typical, kind of as a new building opening would approach. I think suffice to say, anytime you knew, open a new building, you have to create an attendance area for it. That we would want to make sure has followed kind of the process that you've used in the past. So acknowledgement that it needs to be done, but this group didn't work on it. Yeah.
Um, and I probably should have started with that. So I'm glad you guys summarized all three meetings just to show what happened in each of those meetings, what topics were discussed, um, how did we arrive at the final recommendation? To see that journey and I think even folks who are listening or they might look at the, the presentation later, I think it's a, thank you for doing that. I'm going completely tangent, okay?
Okay.
So one of the options that I was expecting, which I did not see on the, you know, new schools or making improvement. So, and it could be a timing thing, but we have a neighboring school district who's shutting down three schools. Have we looked at that option? It's close to Plymouth. Can we buy those schools and repurpose them for Wayzata? Would it save us ton of money or that's like big no-no?
Well, I'll maybe let Superintendent Anderson speak to what's just, what, what I'll say is I know to be true legally. It is, it is legal to operate a, own and operate a school building outside of school desert attendance areas. I don't know that I can think of a single instance of it being true where the case. I don't know, had, I don't think there's been much discussion though.
I'm not aware of a case of that either.
Yeah.
So I think, I think what I heard you say is you could lease space outside the district.
I actually, I, I had a school district get a legal opinion that it's legal to own and operate a school outside of the district's attendance area. But I think it would be unusual.
Yeah, and like I said, it's just the timing. There are, I think, three schools being shut down very close to Plymouth boundary. So that's where I was like, okay. Yes, we bought place in Medina, totally get it. But would it be much or not cheaper, but less expensive to repurpose existing schools and bring them under Wayzata boundary versus building new ones, so?
I'm not attached to that study, but I did, um, I did read the report that was published. And I do know some of the buildings they've identified as being recommended for closure are in somewhat poor condition as well. So I do think you'd end up investing.
Yeah, again.
Money, yeah.
I might suggest to you that those buildings would be on the east side of our district when the growth.
That's the hard part.
In the future is going to be more than.
Right.
You'd probably have to do a lot of domino bumping of people attending and driving. You know, that leads to people driving past a school or two or three to get to their school, which is a challenge, yeah.
I think Trevor, did you have something you wanted to share as well?
Oh, okay. No, I was just confirming what Sal said, that it is legal, but a lot of other things to consider with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about swimming pool.
Okay.
My son happened to be in swim team and they were renting, uh, for certain team at a Breck. Breck is quite expensive private school. And to be honest, their swimming pool did not look any fancy. It was looking quite like a dungeon, to be honest. But they were practicing as a, uh, swim team. Uh, why East Middle or West Middle School, uh, swimming pools cannot be used for that? It's my first. Second, within swimming pool, did we ask even what is the, um, lifetime fitness? I, I suspect for them, it's a business too. They're making money out of it. Do you think that they will be, uh, canceling, uh, this, uh, contract, uh, in future? That's why we are thinking about swimming pool. And the third one is swimming pool, is it once or is it needs? What's?
Sure, all good questions. Um, I'm going to start with the first one. Um, so east and west would have to, I would say that those pools would essentially, either one of them would essentially have to be demolished and reconstructed to serve that need to have the right number of lanes and the right depth and to be the right length and to have the right spectator seating space. So, um, none of them would really today represent that. It's not really like a simple, like fixing the tile or fixing the drainage system. So it would be a pretty major thing. Um, I'll, I did not estimate that, to be clear. Um, I think there was discussion about if the district was going to own a high school athletic facility and it can fit at the high school to reduce student travel time, that that would, that would be great. Um, I don't know what discussions with lifetime have looked like. So I might have to defer to a district employee on that question in the middle there. If there's been discussion with lifetime about the extendability of the lease, we might have to report back more.
Yeah, I don't know that there's been recent, uh, conversation with that. I think the conversations that we've had is being in a position to control our own destiny. When you're utilizing somebody else's facilities, um, you're always somewhat at their discretion, whether those are going to continue or not. And it does take some time to plan for and incorporate a facility such as a swimming pool into a larger construction project. So the conversations that we've had is do we want to position ourselves to be in control of what the future might look like for our high school swim programs? We also know there would be, and, and this wouldn't be a reason to do it necessarily, but there would be huge demand from swim clubs and other organizations within the community and adjacent communities to utilize that space, um, when it wasn't being used, uh, by the high school. And having control over the scheduling, uh, would be, uh, a big component part two. So it's possible Trevor or John might have some additional insights, but those are some thoughts that come to mind for me.
And then I think your, your third question, oh, go for it, Trevor.
No, I was just gonna say, the only thing to add there too, is we saw that the, the lease was a 40-year lease and, um, that's a long lease. A lot of things changed in 40 years. So, um, the fact that it has made it 30 or 29 or 30 years with, um, no changes is, I mean, the program in itself within that facility between 1996 and now has changed a lot and it's put just a lot more, um, burden and stress on that facility, which then puts the stress a little bit on the lease itself. So I think just know that, um, things have changed a lot since 1996. So it's, uh, um, I think there's just a little added, more added attention to the lease itself.
And if I could just add on to it, what you're saying Trevor is there are more, we have from, from 30 years ago or 35 years ago, we have a lot more students in our district and so there's a lot more need. And so we probably need more facilities to accommodate all of the programming. Is that what you were getting at? Okay.
Since we're on this topic, I've just, can I just ask my question real quick about the pool? If you, you know, is, is it a possibility to generate a little bit of revenue for the district? Or is it kind of negligible? And it wouldn't be the reason we would do it, but would it help pay for itself somewhat?
I think if you looked at it like, uh, will it, will it pay for the cost of its initial upfront investment? That would take, you know, quite some period of time. Um, and then I think the, the answer to the question, and maybe Trevor has some thoughts. You know, it would be, uh, um, you know, a calculation of operating costs and what you would choose to charge, right? You know, pools are, are not known for being moneymakers. But I do know that there is high demand. So if your, if your unique climate can support it of kind of getting it full enough to start, I think many districts are happy with, I don't know, breaking even. Sometimes what I talk about for a facility like that, right? Is to offset the utility costs and the custodial costs and the maintenance costs. And, you know, pools are intensive spaces for sure.
Yeah, and there's always the, uh, difficult to quantify, um, benefit of, you know, should we be able to host, you know, larger events from teams or programs that might come from out of state or outstate? And, you know, that just, you know, infiltrates money into hotel rooms and restaurants and those kind of things. So I, and the people do studies on those, but I think it's hard to quantify exactly what that means. But it's certainly, uh, a benefit to the community to have a facility that might be able to serve those needs in the future.
And, oh, I was just gonna say, Valentina had a third question, which was, is it a want or a need? And I think that's an interesting, it's an interesting topic that the task force spent a lot of time on. I think most would say that they could understand why that, that would, why that would be needed, but it didn't, um, come, it, they wouldn't want it to come at the expense of your educational offerings, right? So there was a lot of discussion around, should we include it in Q1? Should we not include it in Q1? And there was many people who expressed great discomfort at kind of lumping it in with everything, right? So it was kind of a let the community make that decision kind of for themselves, right? Cause it seems like it could be a topic that would garner a lot of discussion.
Clarification with swimming pool. Correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding, it, in order to have competitive, um, pool so that you can have other schools coming and competing, you have to have 50 meter pool, which is quite expensive, my understanding. That's at least what we heard. That's why we, when we, our team was competing had to take some quite far away. Is it true?
I don't believe that's required for the state high school league. I can see the value in that, you know, they call it a long course pool. Um, to be clear, this, this budget here is not for a long course pool. So that would be a, I don't remember what we came up with. We talked about it at one point. It would be, I think, approximately in the, in the 40s somewhere. It was like another $10 million to be a long course pool. So I don't think, I don't think that would be a requirement. You know, many are passionate about what, as many controls as you, right? And so you kind of have to decide your own, you know, where you want to be. Um, but I do think a new building will create a lot of discussion opportunity, especially as we go take tours of other people's new. People, that's a feature people really like to talk about, you know, because families want to know what, what's keeping their children safe. So I could see that, um, spurring more discussion, but I do know it is regularly revisited.
So there's still space and, uh, maybe I should wait for you to answer as well, John.
Yeah, I was just gonna, just expand a little bit. Like, you know, as, as things happen and, and we go through this, and we've gone through this over the last 10 or 15 years, we are, there's constantly challenges that come up or there's opportunities to make improvements. And we have that safety and security committee that meets, they review all that, review, you know, along just the laundry list of things. And, and as we go forward, there's also new technology and new ways to do things. Um, and so it's vetting all of that out as we go. So even as we look at this, I mean, there, we are making improvements as we go. The intent of this is it really speeds it up. Like it really allows us to then look and remember, we did a whole bunch of work in 2016. Um, so you think of all those cameras and all those door access. I mean, they are getting to the point that they're nine, 10 years old. So technology has changed. I mean, we can look currently as we do have, as we have camera failures to replace it, the new cameras, you can pick them out just by looking at the screen, the difference. So things like that is what, is what we're doing.
A follow-up question on that, does that fall under long-term, the LTFM? Or does that, because it's replacing and you can slightly upgrade as your, as technology changes? Or is that separate?
In some cases, in some cases, it's falling under the tech levy in some cases. And some of this stuff, it, it depends on what it's doing and the, and the function of it.
Thank you for that. Um, and then my second question is, because we all still hear about this, I will tell you. We are a district that is committed or has been committed to one high school. And the question continually cups up, would we ever have a second high school? Because we have new land in Medina, is it possible to have a middle school plus an expansion of that to be another, you know, a satellite spot for a high school or high school programming or somehow? Because I think for a lot of families, 4,900 students sounds like a whole lot of people in one building. Um, and so I'm wondering what the rationale is and why we are still committed to a one high school community.
Sorry, I was just looking for, um, as we worked to answer some task force members' questions around this, we went back to some of the messaging from the 2014 bond. Um, and I know it's kind of a long answer, but I think, um, when we reviewed it, I, I, I believe the group decided, you know, these things, these, these, um, reasons are all still true and it was relatively succinct. Um, I will answer your kind of Medina space question too. So, um, this was back from the 2014 task force. It says, what options were considered for addressing growth at the high school? And you had a task force at that time. They explored expanding the high school, building a second high school, creating a separate ninth grade campus, creating a separate 12th grade campus, adding a fourth middle school and changing grade configuration. You can see a couple of lists here, K5, 6, 9, 10, 12, K6, 7, 9, 10, 12. Um, and the after thorough review, all involved were unanimous in their support for maintaining current grade configuration as best practice and expanding the building. The reasons were a wider range of opportunity available for students. Concern about disparities that would exist between one larger and one smaller high school. Continuing the excellence in place at the high school. Positive case studies of other successful large schools. Maintaining community unity. Better preparation for transition to college and long-term operating cost efficiencies. And in 2014, it was, um, estimated that operating a second high school would exceed an additional $12 million over 20 years. So, um, I, we did hear from, um, Scott Gengler about, um, the work that the high school does to make learning relevant for every student and the work they do to study and work with other high schools across the country to make being a large high school successful. And I, one task force member said, I don't remember which one of them, otherwise I'd give them credit. But, um, obviously something's working because you're regularly, you know, at the top of the list, right? So I think there are concerns to be had, but the, the administration at the high school works incredibly hard to make that a good experience for students and families. Um, and they would continue to do that.
Well, and I think what I appreciate here is that the reason that we're continuing on with a one high school is really based on the student experience and academic excellence. And then everything else is kind of a byproduct. So the efficiencies and the financial piece of it are a byproduct of it, but we're still focused on our, on what's best for our students, so.
And the, the acreage you own, um, in Medina, um, that would need to be, the Department of Education would recommend essentially that entire acreage for a high school. So I would say it would be inadvisable to have more than a high school on that land.
Even if it was just a smaller, because if we could, so if the, if the, uh, capacity at the high school right now is 4,000, what is it, 4,069 students? That's our capacity?
Yep.
So to get, take that extra thousand students, you know, if we had a smaller high school, that would still be, we would still need a lot of that acreage?
So there's a couple of things there. Maybe if I go to this for a second. So the Department of Ed has a guideline, uh, recommendation, it's not a rule, it's a guideline, um, of site size. So they have a table that says for this site, this type of building and this many students, you need a base of this many acres plus an acre for every 100 students. And that is supposed to be of, we call it buildable land. So not steep grade and not wetland, right? And so, um, you, while you have an 86.6 acre site, you can see that, um, just slightly over 22 of it, I believe, is wetland, right? So we're really down into the, you know, 64 acres or so. Um, and that would be very, very close to the Department of Ed guideline for what you would want for a high school. So the recommendation is 10 to 12 acres for an elementary plus one per 100. And then a middle school is 25 to 35 acres plus one for every 100 students. And the high school, I think is, is it a base of 60? I think it's a base of 60. Might be 50, I can go, I can go look. But, um, because they think about, you know, how many more people are driving and just the significant amount of field space you need for high school athletics. So, um, you know, the acreage just get taken up fast for a secondary building, for sure. That was a really long answer, I'm sorry.
Speaking about safety and security, um, uh, we saw during presentation from, uh, Morris Leverman, we saw, uh, obviously after September events, that many parents are very concerned about its priority. It's number one, safety and security. So looking at, um, I mean, bullet point which you provided, what else? I mean, as for cameras, and all my understanding is we already, at least from presentation from, um, uh, Wade, I remember he was saying we are top of the line already with that, am I right? They were already, at least around high school. And, um, other than cameras, what else can be done? Are we looking into anything like, uh, one more time, I'll bring that school, uh, Lakeville, uh, district is doing for, um, so that parents have, um, peace in their mind that, uh, kids will have more chances if, in the event of unthinkable, kids will have more chances to survive.
I do want to take the first part and then I can do the second part? Okay.
Yeah, and I'll go back to what I said before, and, and that is we, we can have the top of the line and every year that that camera is in place, there's always something better. So part of this is to actually look at that, um, and to look at the feedback that we get from buildings in terms of it, there's any number of things that can be in here. Um, we will have to prioritize that, but, um, we, we can say we have top of the line cameras and we do have a lot of cameras. We have a lot of views and a lot of different things. But those cameras have a life, a shelf life and a life expectancy. And that's what. And that's what we're running into right now. We just went through and, and did a, a card access upgrade in terms of some of that stuff. So we have been making improvements. Like I said, this is really to accelerate that and get us to where we're, where we want to be.
When it comes to your topic about what other school districts are doing, I'm pretty familiar with what the Lakeville School District has been doing. I think it's important that we not disclose too much of that at a public meeting because some of safety is the security of that information. But I do know there've been a lot of discussion around hardening products that could be implemented. You just have to have a discussion about what it does to a school atmosphere. Right? And how, how it looks, you know, how visible are things, how not visible are things to, to users?
From the video we provided, obviously we also probably try not to show all the details, so perpetually.
Right.
Know.
Exactly.
It looks like they tried to do such way that it's not as, I mean, right into your face. But at the same time, at the event of situation, you have, you have more chances to survive.
Sure.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Now, we talk about twenty-nine dollars per month increase in tax, is that right? About twenty-nine?
On the, on the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, yep.
Yeah, right.
Get back to the tax act here.
So that, yeah, so that is a part of what I would pay, let's say I had a sixty, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. I would pay twenty-nine dollars a month extra for the, these buildings for the school district. I also pay additional property tax that the city actually levies on me, right? Because they want to build roads, they want to build facilities and all that. So are we considering that as well as a burden for the taxpayer?
What I'll say is this is modeled based on your taxes. But of course, when people go to the ballot box, all of that swirling around in their, in their head and their heart. So you have to be cognizant of what other entities are doing.
Right.
But we can't control it. So this increase is not taking into account any known city or county increases.
Just wanted to bring that out there so that people understand that this is not the only tax increase that they will have.
Correct.
The Q one, non-renewal of, or renewal of tax levy, tech levy, did we not talk about that because that is, that is a requirement for the next year, you know, during the referendum? And will it, will it not increase the taxes at all?
We just didn't talk about it in the task force just because it wasn't a facilities topic.
Okay.
They were just advised that the district would, would likely pursue a renewal. And so we just wanted them to understand that if there was a bond question, it likely wouldn't be the first question.
Okay.
It's a renewal, it's a renewal of an existing levy?
So no tax implications additional?
Essentially, no, no tax impact is.
Okay, that's more for that.
Yeah, thank you.
So can you go back to the, the, the end of the, of the task force meeting two? You had those, the yellow, the blue, the green and the red box?
Yeah.
Right? You had those questions?
This? Oh, no, I know what you mean. This.
This one here? So what, what was the result of this? What, what did we find out?
Sure, so what I would say, and I'm going to talk in generalities a little bit because we did have, I think it was five different small groups and then people finished it individually at home. Trends were that there was a lot of support for capacity expansion. Trends were that people did not understand why special education renovations were needed. So we had to do a lot of educating at the next meeting. There was a trend of people wondering, I mean, it was phrased a couple of different ways. One was, why didn't you build all those classrooms already at the early learning school? Or if that other funding source could have built the early learning school, can we not use that funding source now? So that, out of those Post-it notes arose a little bit of an education around school finance and explaining that, yes, that is an available funding source, but it does not generate the, you know, the amount of money we, we need here. Other things that were yellow, where there were some concerns, you know, this is before people knew the survey results from Peter Leatherman or budgets. So there was people concerned about dollar amount and being sensitive in the economic climate that we're in. There were people who had read Post-it notes on the pool worrying what it might do to the rest of the projects, right? Like, is this going to be a divisive issue? Trying to think, I do have a document that outlines all of them. Trying to think of other main themes. I would say anything that was yellow was just really people wanting more information, and so we brought that back to meeting three. There was a couple people concerned around the pace of the study, right? Of, you know, there, there's a few of us who like to take our time with things. And so they were wondering, you know, can't we just take more time to study it? But, you know, we did spend some time talking about that this has honestly been studied by the district for years, right? And the problem is only getting closer and closer to our face the longer we take to study it. And so there's, there's great information from a variety of projectionists that this is going to be what's coming to you. And waiting will have consequences of overcrowding and maybe further attendance area adjustment. So, you know, there's, there's some of those on the task force, I think, who would have loved to study this maybe themselves for quite a bit longer time, just to give voice to that.
So this was a task force of twenty, right?
I think it was eighteen in total.
Eighteen twenty. So.
Eighteen.
If I'm understanding this correctly, some, some were in the green box, some in the yellow and some in the red, is that right?
Yeah, they did, they did this.
What was the ratio, what was the ratio of that, that green, yellow and red?
Oh.
Just.
I would say at the end of meeting two, mostly yellow, because I think they were drinking from the fire hose of information.
Okay.
I think Peter, Peter Leatherman's presentation, I think, answered a lot of questions in people's heads around what's going to be reasonable to ask for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So better than red, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, there was some.
But I would say. I'd be in trouble.
It was a classic bell curve, right? You know, of, of, you know, right now, I actually don't know enough to make a decision. And I would say over time, we had more people move towards comfort, but we just had to educate.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
You have one more, Valentina? Okay.
I'm glad to see that some schools are going to get kitchen. If obviously things will go through because it's, all schools need to have, all students need to have the same experience. Question I have related, I mean, kitchen understandable, why we need it. But when you are calculating square feet nowadays, to be honest, after kids started having free lunches, obviously more students are eating. I'm wondering if it's going to diminish if, to be honest, free lunches will, will no more being supported. That's my first with kitchens. I mean, will it be still useful, useful square feet if they will build it? And another one is, as for kitchens, I was thinking, maybe silly me, if since we are up to capacity, at least that's what I'm hearing, we're building new buildings, then it means that other schools will have less pressure, not as much. I mean, there are some rooms are going to be emptier, less kids in classrooms. So why do we need all of a sudden to put more money in other school buildings? Other than as understood, kitchen looks like it's, I mean, it's a good idea to do.
Sure, I'll start with the kitchen topic. So, you know, I think it'd be a good exercise, that I'm sure the culinary wellness department could provide participation rates over time that we could look at, you know, pre and post funding of free school meals. I don't think that eve, I don't think that if those programs were canceled, that that space would not be used, right? You know, the kitchens are, in the case of, I don't know, let's pick on Sunset. I think it's somewhere around ten percent of the size it really should be. So there's a significant number of students that participated before it was a free program. And right now is having to be prepared offsite and, you know, transported daily multiple times. And if they run out of something, they're just out for the day, you know, as try as they might.
We hear about the quality of the food.
I was gonna say, some, some food, I mean, texturally, it's hard for food to, to hold up over, you know, over time when it needs to be planned. So I, I guess that's a long answer to say, I, I personally don't think they would be underutilized if the free school lunch program was under, was defunded or under.
Sal, if we might add to, Sal?
Please.
As a principal, a former principal, the same number of kids have to utilize the space, whether they eat the lunch or bring their own or whatever. So we would still need the same amount of cafeteria space in many of our buildings. That's part of the issue is that there's not enough seating and so forth.
And then your second question was, your assertion is, or your assumption is correct that if there was more space than, you know, the buildings you have today would feel less pressure. So if you go through the, I didn't go building by building just in the interest of time, but if you go through the recommended improvements, they're pretty modest at most of the buildings, right? It's, you know, a, a minor special education improvement at a couple of buildings. Of course, at your more newer buildings, there's not much at all. There's a few aged parts of some of your older buildings, like East and West that are recommended. But on the whole, the renovation of existing facilities is not a large driver of cost here. So, but we did include a, a map of every building and like highlighted in a color of what is proposed to be touched. So I, I don't, I don't think it'll be the case that you will, you'll still, I must say that a different way. You'll still have students with special needs who need specially designed environments, even if you aren't overcrowded anymore. So I think those needs will still be there.
So it is because special, I mean, at least based on presentation last year, we saw special ed. It looks like a bigger percentage nowadays and begin needs, am I right?
Yeah, I would say, I think if, if anything, the district's been experiencing kind of a higher percentage of students needing special services, right? So.
Okay, okay. Can I ask one? Can you explain, please, how did your group feel about elementary? Because I am still, I personally not, still not sure. Based on my understanding, this year we prognosted certain numbers, but they did not come to fruition on elementary level. At least I heard we did not get ninety-six students what we were anticipating to get. And when you pull that enrollment, yeah, it looks like, to be honest, through years, it comes down. And Hazel also told us, obviously in Minnesota, we're at one point seven. I mean, birth, uh, birth rate is going down. So how confident was your group that what are we going to do with elementary school? Other than maybe we are going to do open enrollment to fill, to fill that building?
Sure, I can talk about a couple of things the group talked about. What I'll say is we had a couple people in the group kind of were, we had people worrying, were we planning for enough space more than we had people worrying about planning for too much? Just because of the recent experience with the Metal Ridge, Metal Ridge Edition and North Woods. So this graph, just to go back to it, the yellow line is actually an average of multiple projections, right? So that means that you had a projection or two that actually outpaced that or had more intense or faster paced growth and some that were either at that or lower. And the district thought that was responsible to, to show that to the task force, kind of say, you know, we had four different studies done and this is what the average of all of them are. And there were several people who were pretty vocal of, are, you kind of, are we sure this is enough? We did not have a lot of discussion about, and nobody voiced strong opinions that they didn't think those children were coming. I think they drive around the community, they see the development happening, they see the district's enrollment history. Oops, wrong one, this one chart. And so there was more concern about, are we planning the right amount of space? But I, I didn't ask, so nobody volunteered concern with that, but I didn't ask specifically.
Based on your graph, it almost feels like middle school and high school are kind of in need.
I, I think.
Unless I'm reading it wrong.
Well, the, the benefit of those students from a projection perspective is that they exist. So that's the hard part with an elementary school projection is in the five to ten years, there's a lot of assumptions that had to be made. And like I said, the project, several of the projectionists hold development only to known developments or have permits pulled or on the books. And so since most developers don't plan that far out, you know, those factors start to be held low. I agree with you that Hazel's birth rate information has, I'm sure, changed the trajectory of the district's growth.
Yeah, I might just offer too, that oftentimes in enrollment projections, I'll, I'll use the stock market as sort of a metaphor. You can't base it on any one given year, but you have to take a look at it over the long haul. So when I started here in two thousand eight, we had nine thousand six hundred students, of which about eight thousand were residents. And we had about fifteen hundred open enrollment students at the time because we had capacity in our existing buildings at that time. So we've increased from about eight thousand residents, I think in two thousand eight. These aren't exact numbers, but pretty close, I think, up to about twelve thousand seven hundred fifty resident students. So if you look at the average, it's about an increase of two hundred students per year. So this past year, even though we were under projection, we still grew by a hundred and fifty students or so, I think, this year. Or was it closer to, oh, it's about two hundred, I think, this year. Last year was an anomaly that we went up about four hundred students. So it was really kind of a surprise that we accelerated that quickly in one year. But if you look at the average over the, the years, I think we've been in that one fifty to two fifty range for an average of about two hundred students per year. And in looking at the available unbuilt out space yet, those are all factored into these projections for elementary. And that is the most difficult because the second half of that chart, those kids haven't been born yet. So we're predicting and projecting what that growth rate is going to be. And the move-in percentage has contributed to that as well. So the birth rate is one thing they look at. Some districts have a higher than normal move-in rate, I think we're one of those and we have been for quite some time. So that's the way that, that I would look at it. And in our recent conversations with the city of Medina, they, they're projecting six hundred to eight hundred new homes being built in the city of Medina that's part of the Wayzetta School District. So let's go to the low end of that. Some of those housing areas might be developed into multi-unit apartments, et cetera. But if we get six hundred houses, I think that's six hundred elementary kids, right?
Well, and a, and a birth rate of one point seven, it would be a little more than that. But I think Hazel's point is that that's been declining, right?
Yep, and she did say that as, as a community matures, that growth rate will level off. But, you know, I think we should be kind of okay with that leveling off because what we don't want is to build a new elementary and have seven hundred kids show up the first year. So if there's four hundred and fifty or four hundred kids there and we know that we can build out over a five to ten to fifteen year timeframe with that building as it gets closer to its capacity, that would be kind of a nice change from what we've been experiencing. And, and sooner or later, they are going to run out of available spaces to continue building homes because we're going to be pushing up against the western boundaries of our district. So I don't know, those are a few thoughts that come to mind. And I think we're also trying to create some ability for agility and flexibility within our buildings. Because if it has a, if a building has a capacity of seven hundred and fifty kids and we have seven hundred and fifty kids in it, or maybe even eight hundred, you don't have the, a principal doesn't have the operational capacity to be able to make adjustments as needed based on the unique students that you might have in your building from year to year. So to have a little bit of space within each of our elementaries that principals can navigate and implement programs that work better. I think, you know, that would be a really good long-term goal as well. I don't know if that helps or not, but a few thoughts that come to mind.
Positive thing from community, I heard actually some students who go to private school decide to come to high school because of a choices. And because apparently private schools do not allow to travel to take this like P S E O style. That's what, from one very well-recognized student from Wayzetta. It was interesting to hear that feedback because high school provides choices. And if you're thinking about certain career, high, Wayzetta High School, according to that student, provides many choices.
It was pretty amazing, the opportunities, I have to agree.
Thank you.
They, they helped you, right, with this stuff?
Yes, my colleagues Erin and Ellie are here, and John's colleague Jason isn't here, but we'll give him, we'll give him a kudos.
Thank you.
All right, if I could just add, so I think, Sal, the, the point of this presentation, right, is so that we have a deadline of the November twenty-fifth to get something to the state. And so that would require the board to be voting likely next week on this, is that correct?
I think we've been working to set you up for that as, as a, an option for you, right? So we wanted to make sure you had information tonight, ask questions. Other, there's been work to finalize that. Other, uh, there's been work to finalize that projected tax impact and discussion of, um, like refinement of ballot language and things like that and resolutions.
So it seems like we've had a very thorough study and an extensive community, um, participation in this that, that came to these recommendations, and I very much appreciate that. So board colleagues, if you do have any questions in the meantime, the likelihood is that this will come to the board table for a vote on, a vote on November tenth. So reach out to me as the facilities chair, um, and I'll work with Chase to make sure that we get you all of the answers that you need ahead of that vote, so that we're ready to go.
So I, I have a question. November tenth, it's a discussion continues, and November twenty-fourth. So what's happening on November twenty-fourth then?
That would just be the, just because you have a scheduled date, that would be the, you know, last day for, that would say that's the last moment you could make a choice because the review and comment, the last day you could send it is the next day, right?
The vote is on the tenth, though.
I, I believe that's been the plan, but I, I just want you to understand that you have that as an option as a board. And if you don't.
I think it would be tight.
You would slip a date if you don't.
I think this is.
It would be very tight.
This is really important, so let's just make sure everybody understands what they would be voting on.
Sure.
Next, next Monday, if that, if that's the, where we land. So if, if you could just clarify.
Yeah, okay. I think I have the draft resolution. Uh, that's the ballot language. So this is the draft resolution that we have relating to a special election. So here, I'm going to go right here. So it is that the board has investigated facts, declared it is necessary and expedient to A, renew the capital project levy, I'm not going to read the whole paragraph. B, issue general obligation bonds in an aggregate amount and not to exceed four sixty-five. And C, school building bonds in an aggregate amount not to exceed thirty-one for that bond question two. And so I'm sure we could get a, a copy out of this. So the resolution is long to call an election, but, and then there would be, um, the notice of special election, and then I have the, uh, these are the poll, combined polling places. And then signed by the clerk. So this resolution would be all of the actions to kind of get those things in motion, right?
So. Plus the approval, I'm sorry, the, the review and comment will be separate. Given us permission to submit it. And then once we get that submitted and organized, you'll obviously get a copy of it, so.
So the question I have, so that review and comment would be one thing, the board would vote on that to authorize us to submit that to the Department of Education.
Correct.
So that would be one vote. A second one would be the ballot. So there's the ballot language, and is that like a companion to this resolution? Or is this resolution for down the road?
For the ballot question?
Yes.
We're recommending to do it at the tenth or the twenty-fourth because it's ready.
So it would be a, a resolution and the ballot.
Yeah, it'd be two different, two different approvals, but.
Right.
Same meeting.
And then I think it's important just to clarify too. So that's the important next step to help us stay on this timeline so that possibly we could have an elementary open twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and a middle school open twenty-nine, thirty.
Yeah.
But there would be, I mean, this isn't like the, the final, final vote to call for an election, as, right? Or is this the call for an election?
You could choose to do that because you have, you have up until, um, in January to do that. So you, it would be, I would say that would be, it's not a must here in November. You would have between now and that last chance date in January to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
Yeah. So can I clarify your question? So the question is, so we would vote next week to keep the process moving forward to allow us to meet the twenty-fifth deadline. But the vote next week would give us options, but it wouldn't lock us into anything. And we'd have a second, we'd have up until January to fully lock into the vote. Was that your question?
I would say to call for the election, yes, but it isn't, you know, the review and comment document does include, you know, the scope and budgets and schedules of the projects. Um, and I have had them ask for the ballot language as a follow-up. So like, yes, it is strange that those requirements are so out of sync. Um, and you don't have to use all that extra time, right? But if you were to choose to change projects, then I would say that review and comment would either need to be rescinded or amended, and I'm not sure you'd still make April. Yeah.
Correct.
So the best case scenario, and actually maybe the recommended direction for us to go would be to have that authorization for the review and comment and the resolution with the accompanying ballot language for the board to take two separate action items at next week's meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, and just maybe a little context because it seems, there's probably a little confusion between the twenty-fourth and the tenth. And Heidi, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was discussion at the facilities steering committee about this. And there was a little discomfort in bringing this forward on the twenty-fourth, which is a work session versus the tenth, which is a regular school board meeting at seven o'clock. So that's what felt better. Um, and hence the reason tonight was added on to the schedule to really go through this and take a look at this resolution because this is what would be put into the review and comment. And like Sal said, yes, it could change, but if it does, you're risking M D E coming back and saying you no longer have a, an approved review and comment, so you have to start all over essentially, so.
So to give us the best possible timeline, you would suggest and or recommend that we take that action next week on those items that I mentioned before. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on exactly what are we going to be voting on, so.
Yes.
And if you don't have clarity on that, now would be a good time to ask.
Yes. So I am, I'm still confused. You said January is also.
I'm going to bring up a document, one second.
Right.
Your microphone's not on. Mel, thank you.
Oops, sorry.
I, I can help clarify the date situation. January twentieth would be the last possible day to inform the county that we are having a ballot question on the April fourteenth election. That is the last possible day. They request far more advanced than that, but legally you can wait.
It does not have to be done next Monday, right?
That's just the ballot question part for the county. That's not the same.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to go through, this is a document created by Ellers. I'm just going to go through it really quickly so you can see potential election dates in twenty twenty-six across the top. So focus in on the April fourteenth. So you can see here the review and comment materials to the commissioner. Board must approve of application prior to submission. That's that November twenty-fifth we've talked about. And then what, what Amy Geis is talking about is there, there are a lot of legal steps to calling for an election. So this adopt formal resolution calling for the election, that has to be at least eighty-four days in, prior to the election. So as she was saying, the last day you could possibly do that is the twentieth. So there's nothing stopping you from doing actions together. But for whatever reason, they, the legislature, as they've made these rules, they put the review and comment kind of ahead of the calling for the election.
So what can you repeat again? What are we going to do on November tenth? What are we going to approve on November tenth?
I believe we'll have resolutions prepared for you to authorize the administration to submit the review and comment.
Yep.
And a resolution to call for the election, but you would have the choice of what you do with those things, right? Is that fair to say? Yep.
Okay.
And in order for us to meet that suggested timeline, next Monday would be the best way to do that. And the recommendation we're making to the board is essentially.
Correct.
Let's prepare ourselves to do that for next Monday.
And this will not require a, a presentation or anything, right? You just bring the recommendation and the resolutions, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. We can talk about things again if anybody wants to. We'll be here and ready to have discussion, but.
I was just going to reinforce, yes, we'd like to have you here next Monday.
Of course, we will be here.
Can I, can I clarify?
Yeah, Valentina.
I still also have a question, I guess, that I will agree with your group of eighteen. It's a task force, force, but it is a group of eighteen for the community of this size. I'm a little bit concerned that I feel rushed, that we don't hear, uh, any feedback from the community. Eighteen people is not community. And, uh, can, can it be done such way that we give enough time and space for community to hear this presentation? And maybe, uh, send, uh, they will be able to, uh, voice their, if they, I mean, their concerns or if they, uh, their, um, pros or concerns. That is a little bit troubling for me, but I feel rushed, to be honest.
I'll let the board talk about schedule. What I would say is the community survey, um, did reach more community members. And I think the task force took comfort that the projects they were pondering were generally highly favored by the community, right? That, um, most projects had, um, what Peter called, um, commendable support out in the broader community. So I do think that gave some task force members comfort, but I totally understand your concern. I think that the challenge is the district has been studying its enrollment growth for a few years to check what a post-pandemic trend line looks like. And now we see what's going to happen, and it's going to come pretty soon, right? Twenty twenty-seven is not that far from now. Um, in fact, we're not going to get a building open on time. And escalation every year for projects will, will add to a dollar amount like this. So I, I appreciate that. I think for a few of us who have been a part of it, it feels, we've been studying it for years, and it just hasn't felt like the right time to ask before now. But your personal, um, feelings of the process, I totally respect.
There will be a vote, so people will ultimately get to decide. There will be a vote.
You, the board vote or the public vote?
But the public vote.
Sure. Yep.
In the spring, so.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
I, I get that.
I, I, I think we should go ahead. I think we have had this community task force, community surveys by Peter Leatherman, and so many other surveys, so many other, I, I don't know what else the community will, will contribute to this. And the representatives on the task force are like the C F A, the P T As and all those, I believe are representative of the community, in my opinion. But, uh, so I think we should go ahead.
So we'll plan accordingly for next week and.
I, I would say so, yes.
And we'll welcome you back then.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, thank you, Sal, John, and everybody that participated in this process. This completes our work session for this evening. The time is now right on the dot at nine o'clock. The Wayzetta Public School Board of Education Work Session for Monday, November third, twenty twenty-five is adjourned.